Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call our February County Council meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is our auditor's financial report.
Before I go into that, I have a couple of modifications to the agenda to point out. Under the consent agenda for community corrections, Co-op Fund 8665, they have asked that that be removed from this agenda, and they've submitted a new request for March. And then also with community corrections, the form of the salary statement was correct. However, the amount in the classification, it's a pole two at $45,076. And then under new business, you've been asked to approve the inter-local agreement with the cities for spay and neuter services. So that was sent to you separate from the packet that's sent last week as well, and that was approved by the commissioners on February 6th.
Okay. Thank you.
So as far as the financial report, nothing changed on the top half. We are starting the year with a beginning net balance of $4,703,547. There were no requests or granted appropriations or reductions in January, and there are no requests for appropriations or reductions in February. We had some miscellaneous expenditures paid out for $1,713, leaving a net available for appropriation of $4,701,833. As far as revenue, January isn't our most exciting month. We had a couple of fourth quarter reimbursements come in. We received reimbursement for the REC shared employee, received some reimbursements for the school resource officer, and those were salaries that were paid in '22. And then under other financial services miscellaneous, we had 2020 outstanding checks were redeposited to the general fund, that checks that were never cashed. So giving us 4.6 of our percent of our revenue collected through January. On the fund balance report, just one fund to point out, 1111, the campaign finance enforcement, that was a new fund in '22, and there were two $50 fees collected in January for that one. Lisa, I thought you had a question about one of the fund balances or the disbursements?
The 4718, the self worker account, we had a large disbursement.
Forty-seven eighteen?
Yes, and Kaylee confirmed that one for me. That was, we transferred $500,000 of that to health insurance fund, I believe. Unless there are any other questions, that was all I had as far as fund balances and revenue for January.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to our treasures report. Good morning.
Totals for the month of January ended with an account balance of $164,194,160 with an interest rate, or interest of $545,211.61. The average interest rate for January was 4.59% on the primary accounts. In the general fund, we are already at 57.8% of our forecasted budget. So today's market is unusual with an inverted yield curve, which shows a higher interest rate now, but are expected to drop in the long term. So my thoughts on this, if we are planning to issue bonds, maybe wait a couple months. So that's all I have for the treasure report. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Any public comment about any of our agenda items before us this morning? If not, our next item on our agenda is to be a presentation from the Greater Lafayette Climate Action Plan. Michael, welcome. Good morning.
Today, I'm representing the Joint Leadership Committee, who is publishing Greater Lafayette's first ever climate action plan. So this achievement is the culmination of two years of hard work, in which we, the Joint Leadership Committee and many others, have met with the public for presentations, focus groups, public input meetings, we've had roundtables with industry leaders, and we've had meetings with our advisory committee. So it's no surprise that in doing so, that we found that the community is adamant, that they are ready and requesting a resilient and sustainable community. We identified our planning process and got to work. So this required conducting a greenhouse gas inventory, technical studies such as the Hoosier Resilience Index, tree canopy assessments, community engagement, goal setting and forecasting, our plan creation, and implementation in assessing the plan, which is where we are today. We have four focus areas, which is energy use in the built environment, transportation, agriculture and forestry, and water, wastewater and solid waste. Under each of these focus areas, the public has identified their highest priority. In the energy use in the built environment, it was beginning the transition from fossil fuels to renewable sources. Within transportation, it was incentivizing zero and low carbon fuel transit. Under ag and forestry, it was enhancing, protecting and improving our access to natural resources. And under water, wastewater and solid waste, it was enhancing recycling, waste reduction and composting options for residents. Our emissions by sector were that our energy in the industrial, excuse me, in industrial buildings was our highest emissions at 34%. Transportation came in next at 27%. Our energy in residential buildings was 23, MG in commercial buildings 13, water, wastewater and solid waste at 2% of our emissions. And agriculture and forestry was the only category that actually was a deficit, which is negative 2%, meaning that it is a carbon sink for us. So all of this led to us making our science-based target, which is a reduction in emissions of 58% by 2030. And so today, I bring this plan before you, asking for your approval and acceptance of it, and if there were any questions about implementation.
Questions from council members?
I just want to make sure I understand. Can you say what the plan, the plan is? Is to focus on the environment, transportation, agriculture and water areas, and those four, I don't have it in front of me because I took it from my notes, but, and those four areas that you mentioned inside of each of those?
Yeah, so those four areas are where all of our goals fall under.
Okay.
So we found the four being our energy and our built environment, our transportation, our ag and forestry, and then water, wastewater and solid waste.
Okay, so what is the next step after this?
So with implementation, it's identifying who within all of the jurisdictions will be the person to implement, and then which goals that we can implement first, so prioritizing.
And when do you expect to have this done? What's the timeline for the next step?
Well, as soon as possible is the best answer I have, but I know that West Lafayette has already hired somebody in the role. Lafayette is identifying someone, so next the county. So that is our next step, identifying a staff member to implement this and oversee it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? None? Okay. Thank you very much. What is it we need to do with this, Doug?
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen the plan. Typically, I think it'd be the commissioners who would do any implementation. They'd obviously need your support if there's a financial component to it, which I assume there is, but I guess, I mean, unless there's something I'm not seeing, I wouldn't necessarily think you need to formally adopt it yourselves right now.
So no?
I mean, I think this is information for you. I don't think there's any necessarily...
No actionable item at this point?
Not that I've seen.
Okay.
I mean, if you have objections to it, you should probably voice them, so the commissioners know that you got issues that are going to come up. But I don't know that there's a formal motion or anything else that's in front of you right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which also involves our minutes from our January 10th meeting. Any items that need to be removed, other than the one that Jennifer had mentioned for community corrections? If not, I'll take a motion to consider the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have additional appropriations. First up is the prosecutor.
Good morning.
Good morning. Let's get a motion on the floor first, Pat. Thank you.
Sure. I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the incentive fund 8895 appropriation for $5,761.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Fund 8895 appropriation in the amount of $5,761. Now, Pat, sorry about that.
This is the child support and fund we picked throughout the year, we pull in a part time of expenses.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 2507 appropriation.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the drug enforcement fund 2507 appropriation for $37,943.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Fund 2507 appropriation in the amount of $37,943. Discussion.
Thank you, and let's go back to the, our, the child support division, last year we had 4,600 cases, and they collected $12,230 for custodial parents, which is a million dollars in bonds, which is, that's the record for, we're always looking to collect from five million to twelve million.
So, and now going to the drug enforcement fund, this is the fund where the court cases on forfeitures from drug activity is ordered to the court to us to spend for law enforcement needs, and these are the ones, what we're going to use them for.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have TIMA Fund 1152. Sharon's got this one, I guess.
I'll make a motion that we approve the local emergency planning fund 1152 appropriation as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the Fund 1152 appropriation for emergency management in the amount of $28,540. Discussion.
So this is the funds that the LAPC receives from the states, from the facilities that have hazardous materials in their facilities, and they have to report that, and so we get money back from the LAPC to create a local emergency plan. They appropriate this, and in our January meeting, we voted on how we were going to spend it this year, and that's what's before you.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Surveyor Fund 9242 appropriation.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the SIA fund while fund 9242 appropriation, food.
Second.
Food. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the Fund 9242 appropriation for the amount of $444. Discussion.
So this is a grant that they received in 2021, and there is funds still left over from it, so we got permission from SIA to use that funds on the WOW program for this year to purchase the food that we need to, to feed the 600 kids that we put out there.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Community Corrections Fund 1175 appropriation.
Make a motion, we improve the county misdemeanor fund 1175 in the amount of $60,332.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the county misdemeanor fund 1175 appropriation for community corrections in the amount of $60,332. Discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is our portion of the misdemeanor fund that we split, the sheriff's office uses for lease payment for our vehicles.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have a salary statement for community corrections. And remember, this is the corrected amount, too.
Yeah, the form in the packet was correct.
Oh, the form was correct, the agenda is not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the salary statement for Corrections Officer Pole Two in the amount of $45,706.
Second.
I have a, it's $76.
Seventy-six.
Forty-five oh seven six. Isn't that, yeah, okay. Just want to make sure my memory was correct. That's what I wrote down. Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the salary statement for community, or for Corrections Officer Pole Two in the amount of $45,076. Discussion.
We received this position from our Department of Corrections grant for this year. It's 60% paid, that salary 60% paid for through the Department of Corrections grant, and then 40% through user fees.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Highway Fund 4880 appropriation.
Mr. President, I move that we move on 4880, the bridges 440,000, and the rideaway 950,000, for a total sum of $1,390,000.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the Fund 48880, or 4880, if I can speak, that would help, total appropriation of $1,390,000. Discussion. Morning.
Good morning. The first item, the bridges, 440,000, that's a result, Bridge 32 on Hagerty Lane, the project is complete, it's the final change orders, just to close out the job, we need an additional $440,000 appropriated. The rideaway, $950,000, is the 450 South, 500 East project, the reconnection to 52, signalization, et cetera. This is the, would be the last of the rideaway services, land improvement and damages for that project.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 4805 appropriation.
Mr. President, I move that we accept 4805 for heavy machinery, $50,000, and also for the professional, professional service, no, the rideaway, that he described as 900,000, or total sum of 900 and 50,000.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the Fund 4805 appropriation for a total amount of 950,000. Discussion.
That would be me. Sorry. The heavy machinery, $50,000, is, is kind of a bookkeeping thing. We've taken over the motor graders, we bought two of the four. Basically, it gets us, so we're not paying personal property tax to the vendor on these, and some other financial items, but in doing that, we then have to maintain the warranties separate, we're paying them out of that accounts, we need to move the $50,000 into there to pay those warranties.
Okay.
And on the rideaway, this is moving, this is the Morehouse project, Phase One, Phase Two, we're closing in on the final rideaway, this should be, we, that's all 80/20, and of course, we have to appropriate, roll it back in to finish out the last of the payments, and that should be done by the end of the year.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Parks Fund 8490 grant appropriation.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Fund 8490 grant appropriation for a total of $50,000.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Fund 8490 grant appropriation for parks in the amount of $15,000. Welcome. Are you ready?
Well, thank you. Yeah, this came about, the grant is from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife for invasive removal. That whole property, we had estimated, and this is just for the first phase, the whole total was 180-some thousand, but for this first phase, it was 50, or I think 55,500. 15,000 of this is coming from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, but I would like to thank the Parks and REC Foundation, who also gave 15,000, but Roy Whistler Foundation gave us a good chunk, which amounted to $25,500. So again, this is just for first phase, but company out of Bloomington Ecologic is doing the work, and actually, they're going to start this week on that first phase, which is pretty exciting. So I can't give you the list as far as invasives that they're removing, but obviously, it's, the list is long, so, but that's, that's pretty much what it is. I would like to thank Sharon, because she's the one that really picked this up. I, it's not like I made a mess of it, because I didn't have it in my hands long enough to do that. I just went and went to the expert, and she took care of it, and that, and I do appreciate that.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have the Fund 4126 appropriation.
I'd like to make a motion for the gift fund 4126 appropriation in the amount of $7,500.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Fund 4126 appropriation in the amount of $7,500. Discussion.
That, that particular gift fund, actually, that $7,500 that we're moving is pretty much used for Mary Cutler's naturalist program, which she puts on in June called Outdoor Explorer, which has obviously been fairly popular in the last few years, but that's pretty much what that fund does, just to cover the expenses that they'll incur trying to put that event on.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Fund 4127 appropriation for the sheriff.
I'd like a motion, make a motion to accept donation fund 4127 appropriation as requested for $5,000.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the donation fund 4127 appropriation in the amount of $5,000 for the sheriff's department. Discussion. Good morning, Terry.
Hello. This was a grant awarded to the sheriff's office through Drive Sober, and this money will be applied to the, towards the purchase of a new drone.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 2573 appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Animal Control Fund 2573 appropriation in the amount of $30,000 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Fund 2573 appropriation in the amount of $30,000. Discussion.
And this is funds to support our animal control officer for whatever equipment he needs, and then for professional services, those animals that are found to be stray or abandoned. Out in our jurisdiction, the majority of the time, we'll take them to the Purdue Small Animal Hospital if they need treatment, and so that's what part of that, the services money is used for, treatment of animals that don't have an owner.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 2573 appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the False Alarm Fund 2574 appropriation, the amount of $24,000 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Fund 2574 appropriation in the amount of $24,000. Discussion.
These, some of this revenue is generated from alarm vendors that register on an annual basis with the sheriff's office. I believe one of those vendors, when I used to do it, was Comcast, they have an alarm business for residential alarms and business alarms. And then there was an ordinance we discussed last year, 2021-33-cm, that was established, because we weren't really sure how to use the funds in this account, and it came up, the verbiage in that ordinance dealt with anything with alarms. The only thing the sheriff's office does with alarms is respond to them, so we kind of have to sit down and figure out how we apply the funds for this, towards this ordinance. this ordinance.
That was the amendment that we looked at.
I've slept since then, but I feel like we already amended that ordinance so you can use it for general purposes once your alarm stuff is taken care of.
Okay. Okay. Any questions or discussion from council?
Do you have very many false alarm calls?
Probably 99% of our alarm calls are false.
Okay. There are no other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 2575 appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Continuing Education Fund 2575 appropriation in the amount of $5,500 as presented.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Continuing Education Fund 2575 appropriation in the amount of $5,500. Discussion.
And these are fees set by state statute. I think we get $4 per citation issued by our officers, and then that $4 is then put into a training fund that we can use for training.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 1156 appropriation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Firearms Training Fund 1156 appropriation in the amount of $79,000 as presented.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Firearms Training Fund 1156 appropriation in the amount of $75,000, or Discussion.
And so this is money that we use to purchase firearms or ammunition and to do our firearms training qualification. This, this one's a little unique. In that, at previous years, the sheriff's office collected fees for handgun permits. And then legislation was passed and enacted July 1st of 2022, where it is not required for anyone to get a handgun license to carry a handgun if you're 18 or older. And so we lost, you know, a large amount of revenue from those handgun fees. The state reimbursed us last year, I think it was 50,000 or 55,000 each sheriff's office. And I've got an email out to the Indiana Sheriff's Association member to see, is the state going to reimburse the sheriff's office again this year for those fees that are lost? And so that one's a little unique.
I hear what you said. Where did the state get their money to reimburse you?
That, that's my question I've been asking. I don't know.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
I guess a comment, then. If we could see a total of what was spent on, on, on this fund, because of the fact that if we don't get reimbursement, then I think that we're going to need to make sure that we're budgeting that for next year, or we may even now have to do an additional appropriation this year if we're not going to get the fund, so.
So hopefully, I'll have an answer through that email I sent yesterday afternoon.
Yes.
Will we continue to receive revenue or not?
Right. And if the answer then is no, then I think we need to look at, okay, how much was spent, and realizing there's probably going to be an increase in the cost of the equipment and the supplies that you need, so then we can be prepared next year when we budget.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund 1101 appropriation.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Accident Report Fund 1101 appropriation in the amount of $46,000 as presented.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the Accident Report Fund 1101 in the amount of $46,000. Discussion.
And this is another state statute that generates fee schedule, and we can charge up to $8 for a crash report for anyone that requests it. And then we'll utilize that money for equipment needs in accident reconstruction. And then we'll also utilize it for accident reconstruction training.
Okay. Questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have a salary statement for jail deputy.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the salary statement for the jail deputy up to $21 an hour as presented.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the salary statement for the sheriff's department for the jail deputy up to $21 per hour. Discussion.
So our jail deputies and our communications officers are both pole level 2, the same. Currently, our communications officers that we hire part-time can earn up to $21 an hour. And the jail deputies earn up to $18 an hour right now. So we just want to bring the same part-time hourly rate up to be equal 21 for both.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. We also have a commissary report in the packet from July through the end of the year. Anything that we need to do in terms of noting that?
No, I think you just have done what you needed to do.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Terry. Thanks. Next, we have Fund 8950 appropriation for the commissioners.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ARPA Fund 8950 appropriation as presented for $12,342,872. As presented.
Second that.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the ARPA Fund 8950 appropriation in the total amount of $12,342,872. Discussion.
Mr. President, I need to abstain from this vote due to a conflict of interest of one of the projects.
Okay. Thank you, Jody. Tracy?
Good morning, everyone. I want to give you a breakdown of how these dollars are to be, the planned allocation of these dollars from our ARPA funds. You'll see the first number, $250,000. That is for engineering and architectural services for our, we're still calling it the Americas Buck Creek Colburn Wastewater Project, which will hopefully be, the RFQ will be published later this week or the first part of next week to kind of kick off that project. The next dollar amounts you see, the $11,691,219 is for the Tipmont Wentec Broadband Project. The $73,938 is to wrap up the auditor scanning project. And then the, the final number, the $327,715 is for dam decommissioning. And there are, a lot of people don't realize this, we have at least two dams in the county, one at the Big Fish and Campground known as Marsh Lake on County Road 900 East, and the other on Pretty Prairie Road that we just referred to as Pretty Prairie Dam. Both of those are in really bad shape, need to be decommissioned. And this is just part of that overall project, which I think Stu said, those are going to come in at a million and a half apiece, but this is for some early engineering and survey work. So that is where we get the $12,342,872. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Edith Fund 1112 appropriation for the amount of 500,000.
I'll make a motion that we accept Edith Fund 1112 appropriation, buildings and housing for $500,000 as presented.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the Edith Fund 1112 appropriation in the amount of $500,000. Discussion.
This is related to a project currently going on, Tippecanoe County Jail. That building was originally erected back in 1989. Unfortunately, we have a major drain pipe in the facility that is several feet underground that has collapsed. And so they have, crews have gone into the jail. They are digging out basically a hallway to replace that pipe and doing that in such a way that we can still keep the jail open and operational in those areas. So we, right now, it's, it's exploratory. We don't have any idea what the total cost will be until they've totally uncovered the work to be done. But this, this should get us in a strong position to at least kick things off and make things whole again.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council?
Okay, I got a question. You say that's, that's a sewer line?
Yes.
Or not a water supply?
It's, it's a sewer line, and it is, it was put in place in an era where, where cast iron pipes were used. Today, it would be PVC. And obviously, if that'd been the case back then, we wouldn't have the problem that we're having now.
Who's doing construction? I'm trying to be a jerk. Who's doing construction?
I'm sorry.
Run cameras down there, you can find out where exactly where the break is, and you just go there and stuff.
Yeah, and they did that initially.
They should be replacing all the cast iron.
Right. And it, and it's because it's just, it is completely, it is really amazing and unexpected. It is completely decayed, which doesn't happen often. And they're still trying to determine what would have likely led to that. Is it the corrosive materials that are constantly going, or did the pipes settle and water set into it for an extended period of time? We just, we just don't have those answers, know that it needs to be fixed.
Who's doing the construction, Tracey?
What's the name of the company, David?
WW Rest, Restway.
I'll get, I'll get you some information about that. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't think I was going to be presenting on that. But it's a, it is a contractor that, one contractor that has come in to do both the excavation and the plumbing repair work.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have committee reports.
Mr. President, I'd just like to give a, a report to the council, and this is just going to be just a brief 15-second overview. But as you may know, the opioid settlement, the Meyer settlement has come through. So there is a committee that is working that has been led by Dr. Loomis, that we are looking at how we can maximize the dollars of the opioid settlement with grant dollars to help this community. So I'm part of that community. It's a collaboration of anyone that has touched mental health or anyone with, like the Drug Free Coalition. So the amount of money will come to this board to appropriate at some time. But I just want to let you know Sharon is working diligently as well as this committee, and it's a great collaboration in the community. So more to come.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? Any unfinished business coming before us this morning? Any new business?
Yeah. Sorry, this didn't make the agenda initially, but it's been circulated. It's an interlocal agreement that was circulated to you between the county and the cities for spay neuter services, the way the interlocal statute works, the, it's to be, the agreement is to be executed by the commissioners and approved by the fiscal body. This was approved by the commissioners last week. And the highlights are that Lafayette currently has an agreement with Four Precious Paws and will be the lead agency administering, administering the agreement, responsible for making the subsidy payments. The county in West Lafayette would reimburse Lafayette a portion of that payment of the overall subsidy, and this is to go to rent. But of the subsidy, Lafayette will pay 50%, the county 40%, West Lafayette 10%. Overall subsidy payment to Four Precious Paws will be $48,000 in year one, up to $36,000 in year two, and up to $24,000 in year three, meaning the county's share would be $19,200 in year one, up to $14,400 in year two, and up to $9,600 in year three. The up twos in year two and three are, because the concept is that we'd provide a lower no subsidy payment if the clinic was profitable in years two and three. But all of this is to subsidize the spay neuter program. And then in terms of procedure, I don't need your signatures, but I'd need a motion approving the agreement.
Okay. So there's no ordinance or anything of that nature?
No, it's just the agreement. The stat, interlocal statute says that the fiscal body is supposed to approve these agreements.
Okay. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we approve the interlocal agreement for spay and neuter services.
I'll second it.
Okay. I've got a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Dolam, to approve the interlocal agreement as presented. Discussion.
Just a quick question of how the numbers were devised. Was it looked at the amount of spay neuter from each of the entities and then divided up the 40, 50, and 10?
Yeah, yeah. So the overall numbers are based on the rent being paid, and I don't remember offhand what percentage of the rent for the overall number. But yeah, the percentages are based on a usage study, and I can't remember where they got those numbers. But yeah, the, the usage was 50% Lafayette, 40% county, and West Lafayette apparently doesn't have any significant problems.
Okay. Is there any other question or further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have, if there's no other new business, we have Commissioner FYI.
John, that was WW Contractors, Dan Schrader, and also Hydrovac, Wabash Valley Hydrovac are doing the project there at the jail. So both local, both local companies. Of note for us is we are on the heels of two very successful events at the Tippecanoe County Fairgrounds. One on the 4th of February, the Purdue Ag Fish Fry. I think we had over 1,200 people there. And as I understand, it's very likely the new home for that event. Things went very well. And then for those of you that were able to, to get out, a great time by all at, for the state and the state of the cities and county event on the 6th, there were well over 800 people, and the governor showed up for that event. So it's very busy at the, at the fairgrounds now. In fact, I'm told by staff there that if, if you don't have a weekend booked, it's not going to be long before those weekends are full, but they still have a lot of weekday and evening opportunities. The next big thing that, that's going on out there that, that has become a really big deal for us in, in government is the E-Waste Day coming up on April 1st. So if you've got electronics that, that you don't want anymore, dust them off, load them up, drop them off. We'll have loads of volunteers out there, and it is amazing, the total number of tons that are taken in with each and every event. Those are tons of electronic items that don't end up in our ditches, don't end up in our landfills. And yes, while we do, we do pay for that service, a lot of those components are taken out and are reutilized. And then last, I, it is very, with a saddened heart that I report that former sheriff from Lafayette Mayor Dave Heath passed away yesterday. An incredible public servant and a, and a dear friend to many of us. And I would just ask that you keep both Dave and his entire, the entire Heath family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And yes, we will do that, because Dave served the community for a lot of years in many different capacities, so we appreciate that. Any public comment?
Mr. President, if I may.
Oh, go ahead.
Colleen, do you mind coming up? You may or may not know, but Colleen Connor is retiring and off to some adventures. And I just want to thank you on behalf of the county council and working with you the last couple of years for all that you've done for our community. And, you know, I wish you well on your, your new adventures.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I did want to say thank you to the council for all the years of service and dedication to our program. And I, I am, my new adventure is, just so you know, I'm going into the Peace Corps. So.
Wow.
People said you're just going to retire. No, I'm not going to, I'm not there yet, so. But I'm really excited about that. But I am, I'm confident that I'm leaving the program in good hands, and I did want to introduce you to my successor. Christina, come on up here. Christina Thomas will be taking over as the executive director of the CASA program. Christina. Christina has been with us as our lead attorney, and now she's going to take over lead of the program, and I'm really confident that she'll do a great job, and she's, she's excited.
I am.
It's, there's a lot for she's going to learn and everything, but she'll be taking over the reins here pretty soon, so I appreciate any support that can be given, and I know Kathy and Ben will do a great job, and as she comes before you in the future, I ask that you give her the same consideration that you gave me as I came before you, but thank you for your dedication to the county, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Colleen, and welcome, Christine. Any other public comment for us this morning? Good morning.
First of all, let me thank Councilwoman Vernon for participation on the opioid committee. I thank you very much for that. Secondly, we've also reached out since our last meeting, Kathy, and included West Lafayette in the group for our grant, and we're trying to include more of the participants around the county. Finally, we are lucky to have a Jedi Master as a grant writer, but we also have one in the Health Department, Amanda Balster, who's been working overtime on this project, and deserves a lot of credit as well, so thank you all very much.
Any other public comment? If not, I'll take the last motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.